So at this time, I will call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
My apologies. Commissioner Baker?
Present.
Commissioner Bodak?
Here.
Commissioner Dellisford?
Present.
Commissioner Granados?
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Here.
And Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudet?
Here.
Let the record reflect, we have nine Commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Thank you. Clerk of the Board, please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humble U.S. God, the giver of peace and lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the Constitution, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
May I have a motion to approve the communications?
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just, I would like to read into the record the statement of compliance.
I'm sorry. I keep doing that to you. Can you please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
Certainly, Chair. The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 in the administration building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you. Now may I have a motion to approve the communications?
No move.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, was seconded by Commissioner Dellisford. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisford?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye.
Chairwoman, Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudet?
Aye.
You have the record, let the record reflect, you have nine votes in the affirmative on all of the communications.
Thank you. Prior to opening the meeting for public comments, I would like to speak briefly regarding the Clark Reservoir, as I am sure that is why some of you are here. Over the past several months, we have been actively listening to your feedback through emails, comments, and these meetings. I want to emphasize that the adjustments we've made to the project are a direct result of your input. Our goal has been to refine our vision to align with our county's needs while maintaining our core values. The county has taken significant steps to address the concerns raised, including the removal of several elements that some felt did not fit with the natural character of the reservoir, as well as amending some of the walking paths. Our county manager met with Mayor Bono Corso to inform him of these revisions, ensuring transparency and communication before releasing our updated plan. He also met with Diana Gonzalez of the Clark Reservoir Committee to share this information as well. While not all suggestions were incorporated, a very large percentage of your feedback has been integrated into the updated plan, which is now available on our website for your review. We want to thank you for coming here week after week to share your, you know, share what you have, your thoughts were, and it was important for us to go back and make those changes. At this time, the revised plan represents our final decision. We have engaged in a thorough and thoughtful revision process, balancing preservation with recreational opportunities, and it's now time to move forward. We are confident that the plan we present now strikes the right balance and will serve of the best interests of our county. Again, I want to thank all of you who contributed to this discussion, and we look forward to shaping this project that will be a benefit to all Union County residents for generations to come. The meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. Kindly state your name and town of residence for the record, and if speaking on a resolution on the agenda, please note the resolution number to which you are referring and adhere to the five-minute time limit.
Hi, Susan Scardilly, Wendell Place in Clark. I've lived in Clark since 1964 and in my current house since 2000. Before I lived there, my best friend did, and it was always, in my opinion, the most beautiful spot in Clark. That's quickly coming to an end. Aside from the dredging, all of the project's improvements were ill-advised. So a deal was cut to make some changes, and honestly, that train and that carousel were a joke from the beginning. But you made those changes, and you're still going ahead with the boat ramp. So I think most of us are here because of that boat ramp. So here's what I have to say about that. To cut down all those trees, I will just tell you, the noise from the parkway and the police firing range will be life-changing for those of us that live in that neighborhood. Life-changing noise from the parkway and the firing range. In addition, we have a terrible, terrible drainage problem. We already get flooding from the bad drainage problem. But now, instead of trees and grass, we're going to have a parking lot. That's not going to work out too well for any of us in that neighborhood. In addition, the old, narrow streets in that neighborhood can barely tolerate the cars that we have now. The neighborhood was built in 1950, and all of the streets accommodate one car, not a family full of cars. But now we're going to put trucks in that, and trailers, and an entire parking area with trucks and trailers and boats. I don't have any idea how anybody is even going to navigate that neighborhood. We have trouble navigating the neighborhood now without a parking lot and boat ramps in the neighborhood. It makes no, we have lawn, lawn people come and put a truck down.
Please don't speak from the audience.
And we can't get around the trucks. They're not equipped, okay? So now, the nice thing that maybe nobody cares about is that little dead end there, right before the woods, has served as a basketball court and play area for all our neighborhood kids. And in fact, even though there's only a few, so many of them wanted to come, but unfortunately, you place this meeting on the first day of school, which is not the least bit convenient for children to come to a meeting and tell you why you're ruining their neighborhood and their way of life. Okay? During construction, I don't know what the heck any of us are going to do, how we're going to get in and out of our neighborhood. It will be hell. And I'm going to tell you one last thing. That boat dock and the parking lot will attract all kinds of unsavory activity, and you know it's true. Right now, people hang in the woods. Can you imagine that area, right next to the parkway? Easy exit and entrance for anybody doing anything nefarious, from teens partying, drug transactions, and yes, sexual predators, who will hang in that area because they know that's where children are. This is the most ridiculous plan and how anybody can smile and say, "Well, we got rid of the carousel and the train, so we did a good job for you guys. You did a horrible job for Wendell Place, and it's a disgrace." Thank you so much.
I've done a lot of talking, and I had my points, but I won't go through all of them because I think you're going to hear it all from the crowd. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Mr. Oatman, Ms. Durbin-Drake, all the Commissioners for the degree to which you have listened to us and the adjustments you've made. A lot of residents are very pleased, so I don't want that to go unnoticed. I do think that while there's, you know, probably a half a dozen concerns still, the biggest one is the boat ramp at the East Lake. And when we learned that that was going to stay there, our committee has been brainstorming. It's only been a few days since we learned about this development. So I don't know what's possible, but one thought that we had is, could the East Lake boat ramp potentially be placed at the bend of Madison Hill Road? We see that there could be some challenges there, but it doesn't impact residents in the same way. So just food for thought, and that's all I have to say for today. Thank you.
Clea Cartia, Executive Director of the Roway River Watershed Association. The Roway River Watershed Association staff and Board of Trustees would like to thank Union County for downsizing the scope of the Clark Reservoir project and removing the most negatively impactful aspects of the plan. We are hopeful that this will usher in a new era of transparency and cooperation between stakeholders and the County of Union. As an organization dedicated to the protection and preservation of our natural resources, we are hoping the county will implement more nature-based projects in the future. Regarding the removal of detention basins from Oak Ridge Park, we are hoping that the county will consider underground stormwater detention tanks as a possible alternative to above-ground detention basins in the Clark Reservoir Forest. These tanks installed under parking lots and other impervious surfaces are often used in cities. This option would eliminate the need to remove trees for an above-ground basin. We are looking forward to seeing the revised plan, which now we have. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Chair. My name is Carol Lasco, and I've lived in Elizabeth for 70 years. My family has used Guaraco Park for most of these years. I have two points of concern for your attention. If I may approach, I have pictures.
Give it to the clerk over there. He'll be able to show you it for you.
The pictures you see are the area from the bridge, the basketball court, to the splash and play areas, and they're puddles, okay? These puddles are the length of your car. The depth varies, depending upon the weather, from six inches to more. The muddy water, and if there's no muddy water, it's mud, okay? Over the years, I can recall struggling with my grandson with his car seats and the strollers and the grandson period, trying to avoid these puddles. The grandson is now 14 years old, and the puddles are still there. So I'm asking you or somebody to please make this a hardened surface, some kind of resol, I don't offer anything, I'm just asking for help, a resolution to this long-term problem. I'm also asking for a few more, I have two issues. I'm asking for a few more non-sleeping benches to prevent the homeless from sleeping along the lake. A lot of older people, myself included, we wander around the lake, we walk around the lake, but we need a place to rest occasionally, and then we presume, you know, on our little merry way. So that's for your consideration. On a positive note, I would like to thank you for the fishing pier, again, used by the 14-year-old, repairing the soccer and the track shelters this year. Thank you very much. He also plays soccer. All right? And again, thank you for listening, and I hope to see some attention to my concerns. I appreciate it. Thank you. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Lily, and I'm 11 years old. I live on Wendell Place, and I'm here because I really love my street and don't want to see a boat ramp built here. My friends and I play outside all the time, and since we live on a dead end, it's super safe for us to run around, ride our bikes, and have fun. There is a beautiful piece of forest right at the end of our street, where we see deer and other animals all the time. Sometimes we even see bald eagles flying over. It's like our own little piece of nature, and I don't want that to change. If they put a boat ramp here, it's going to bring lots of cars, boats, and noise, and it won't feel safe for us to play anymore. I don't want to have to worry about all of that traffic and strangers coming through our neighborhood just to launch boats. Please don't take away the fun and safety we have in our little street, and please don't change the beautiful forest we love so much. There are so many places where a boat ramp could work better. Please let us keep our street the way it is. Thank you.
Eric Hausker of the New Jersey Sierra Club, resident of Roway. As some of us have already said, we are most grateful that the Commissioners have heeded our suggestions and our concerns about the short-term and long-term consequences of putting a tourist destination slash amusement park in the middle of the center lake of the reservoir. We remind you that 15 to 20 years ago, the Union County Commissioners, the freeholders, handled the transition of Esposito Farm into Esposito Park. You did that flawlessly. You made a beautiful, well-attended, well-used passive recreation area for the benefit of Union County residents. We always remember that. We are grateful that you took our perspective into account and that you decided to limit the scope of your plans to develop the recreational facilities on the wooded areas of the Wildlife Preserve. We would advise against a boat rental facility on the shores of the reservoir. This would cause, require the construction of infrastructure to store all the boats and canoes overnight and in the off-season. A large storage shed would mean the loss of more trees, as would the building of docks, more parking facilities, and concession stands. The wear and tear and the depreciation of the rented watercraft would mean more expenses to you. Personnel to operate the rentals and maintain the boats would have to be hired. This is a kind of, kind of protected entrepreneurship, which could easily go south. It could be used for a few years, then there would be little attendance, much less boat rentals, and then the decision would be made to liquidate the operation, remove all the parts of the boat rental facility, and the damage to the forest would be permanent, however. In any event, the proliferation of large numbers of kayaks and boats on the reservoir, whether belonging to individuals or to the county, will increase the chance of accidents requiring the intervention of emergency personnel. Such personnel would have to be on standby near the water for such possible events. Boat launch points on the center lake for owners of kayaks is more than enough opportunity to enable people of Union County to enjoy the great outdoors on the lake. And we are most concerned about our Wendell Street neighbors whose property values apparently are going to be sacrificed to carry out the rest of the plan. We urge you to consider this.
Ed Robinson, resident of Clark. On the reservoir, I thank you for apparently considering and taking stuff out that I had said was put in there just to be taken out. It's usually a negotiating technique. Second, I think nobody involved with this has ever owned a canoe or kayak, because if they have, they realize you don't trailer canoes or kayaks. You car-top them. And small rowboats are either car-topped or put on the back of a pickup truck. Ramps are not the way to launch a canoe or kayak. I recommend a fact-finding tour out to Spring Run Reservoir. You can go to the launch ramps. The ramp is for larger boats, all with power. Sailboats are larger. To the other side is a beach launch for canoes and kayaks. You don't get onto a canoe from a dock. You get in shallow water, ankle-deep, and push off. If you get off from a dock, you tend to tip over. So I'm sure nobody has ever considered that. Number two, I did live on Francis Drive for a while. It's about 20 feet to the water. You want to put through a 20-foot, a 10-foot path. I remember one day, at this time of the year, the rutting season, and a buck was there with his herd, challenging. You're going to ask people to walk down that path where there's no escape, and you have a buck in a very aggressive mood, and you're going to have that all the way around. It's a danger you're creating. And if you don't reconsider what you're doing because you decided that the garbage was all you had to take out, then you really haven't listened to anybody.
Well, hello, everyone. I'm John Victor Jacobson, and I live at the end of the Clark Reservoir, right there at Melvin Court. I'm glad to be here alive, because you see, on 9/11/2001, I was buried alive, nearly suffocated, and didn't make it home till late that night in one piece. But here's, I live right near where the dam site is there, and the first thing I'd like to see is a new sign. That sign was put up in 1997. It's made out of half-inch plywood. It says Clark Wildlife Preserve and Habitat on it, and I think I'd like to, I think we'd like to preserve that flavor in our township, don't you? Okay. The second thing I'd like to see is a proper aeration system throughout the whole reservoir system, not fountains, but bottom aeration like serious aquariums have. And it aerates and oxygenates the water and allows, it prevents the muck from accumulating on the bottom, and you'll have a three-to-five-fold increase in aquatic life once the dredging is complete if you aerate it. Don't you think that's a good thing to do, everyone? Okay. Another thing is the walkways that are proposed on the East Lake, the north shore of the East Lake, are so close up against the homes, the backyards of these homes of the people. They have, there's at least a dozen pools, and people are half-naked in their backyards in the summer, and you have these 12-foot-wide walkways on the land. So I want to take those walkways and put them in the water where they belong, or floating on the water, or in the water, or attached to the water, you know, away from the land, away from the backyards. Put those walkways in the water. Another thing I'd like to see is, I think there should be representatives from the township other than Mayor Sal Bono Corso. I love Mayor Sal. He's a great man, and has done a lot of good things for our township. But I think myself and Diana Gonzalez here would be two good representatives to help guide the mapping out of this reservoir project. It's the biggest thing in Clark, New Jersey. It's the biggest waterway in Union County, and I think we should have representatives from the township other than the mayor, in addition to the mayor. And the boat ramp at Wendell? Screw that. Put that boat ramp right at the bend in Madison Hill Road. Right at the bend in Madison Hill Road, you can, it's clear, you can, people can walk up there, but if you build, if you build up to and including that earth and dam, you can make parking there, you can make boat access there, and you can leave Wendell Forest alone, or just put a trail in it if you have to. So that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
I don't mean to change the topic. They all have something to say, too. Hello. My name is Amory Howarth. I am from Middlesex County. I am the president of the Union at Cornerstone Behavioral Health Hospital. I'm very proud RN to have worked there with my colleagues and served the patients who we've helped throughout the years on Cornerstone, East, West, and Runnells Specialized Hospital. But I must express my sadness that my 13-plus years of being a faithful civil servant worker to Union County is coming to a close as of October 15, 2024. I'm deeply sorry to also take you back to a time where it was devastating to everyone, but I am here today to address yet again what it was like to work at Cornerstone Behavioral Healthcare Center during the time of the COVID pandemic. If we've all, I have done, there was a worldwide public health emergency, travel restrictions, lockdowns, workplace hazard controls, mask PPE mandates, quarantines, testing centers, supply shortages of basic needs, hence toilet paper, et cetera. We all heard misinformation from social media to mass media to what you heard on CNN, NBC, all the news, and all it did was cause a great fear in everyone of being in contact with those infected with it. At Cornerstone, all our administration packed up their office in the administrative suites and left the building immediately to satellite from home. Who was left at Cornerstone? The patients, the nurses, and the IAs, all doing all the jobs. Because even, even though we had services of housekeeping and kitchen from our hosts upstairs, they wouldn't even come onto our units. Everything was dropped at our back door, and we, the nurses, the IAs, dealt everything and did everything for those patients during those times. And here we are. We were bored with the weight of what was happening, and to, and once everybody got tested, every single one of our patients were positive. I remember coming home from vacation, going to work, and the next day, it was, was the mandate for the quarantines and everybody to be tested. We sent, we were a psych unit. We sent patients to the ER because of respiratory status that we couldn't handle on our psych unit for failure in respiratory function and fever. We had to speak up. We, our nurses, had to speak up to say, "Hey," to our infectious control officer, "The hospitals are temping every single person who comes into the building. Why aren't we doing that?" You know? And sure enough, 24 hours later, we were then doing it. But why weren't we doing it? We're talking into, into, into March, when some of this, when this started back in January. We took care of these patients, confined to their rooms 24 hours a day, seven days a week. All they have in their rooms are two beds. That's it. That's what a psych patient has, two beds. We, oh, I'm getting to the end. Okay. So we want to know, where's the COVID money? There were, there was government money allocated for our healthcare workers, and we've seen other states, we've seen other counties. Where's our COVID money? Here we are right now, we are dealing with, you're losing your job. Are you getting your retention bonus? Are you getting your uniform allowance? Are you getting, are you getting your vacation pay? You're losing all your sick pay because you've been a dedicated worker, and you worked and you, and you came in. But now, what's in it for us? What's in it for us? We put out a preservation of unit work, okay? And then you canceled us. You canceled us, and you didn't allow us. Now you tell us it was rejected.
Thank you. I'm sorry, ma'am, we have to stick to the five-limit time.
I'm Jeff Coopaw. I'm a resident of Addison, sorry. But our group is based out of Clark. We are the friends of Oak Ridge Ashbrook Historic Sites. We are appreciative and thankful that it seems that Oak Ridge Park is no longer on the chopping block. the chopping block. We're still concerned about the integrity of the St. Agnes property and the reservoir project, given the location of indigenous artifacts and their proximity to the site and the Lenape preference on living on the hills rising above the wetlands in the area as an ashbrook swamp. We suspect that there is a habitation in the Madison Hill area, basically right where the woods behind St. Agnes are. Also, given how close this reservoir site is to Oak Ridge and the Ashbrook archaeological sites, it would be part of one of the most extensive, most intact indigenous archaeological sites in northeast Jersey and not something to be squandered. So we are therefore holding, withholding our judgment on the new changes of the plan until we can review them. We would like to take the opportunity, though, while we're on the topic, to request a discussion with the county on the possibility of proper archaeological work for the apparent slave cabin that our group has located in the woods at Oak Ridge Park, as well as a seat at the table for the planning of the Homestead Farmhouse's restoration and future. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Confortium. I've been working at Cornerstone since nineteen, I mean, thirty-one years. I love my job. I come there every day. Don't call it unnecessarily. Unfortunately, ten years ago, the county sold the building, they sold the nesting home. So for Cornerstone, we have to move downstairs in the basement. We were told that after ten years, they could find maybe a place for us or something was going to happen, which we did not see anything. We know that. They told us, and we are aware that they have a contract that was going to end December fourteenth. So we were all prepared, at least by December fourteenth, from there we know what to do. All of a sudden, the county decided to close the facility and let us hang in. We don't know what to do. So my question is this, what is the county going to do for us for the remaining three months? Are they going to pay us for those three months? Or are we just going to leave like that and go? I believe when a business is closing, at least the owners, they have a package for the employees. In this case, what do they have for us? So, and is the county going to pay us for the severance pay? What are we getting? Nothing? We're just going to leave like that? So I want you to think about it and see whether there's anything you can do. It might be a little bit too late, but at least there's something you can do to help us. Because all our lives, we've been working here at Cornerstone, and then we're just going to lose our job with nothing. Thank you very much for listening.
My name is Rich Sternegel. I'm the property owner at twenty-seven Wendell Place in Clark. I'm a fifty-five year resident of Union County. I've kind of stayed back and listened and watched what was happening with the reservoir along the way, but obviously want to kind of step up and say something today. I agree with the, you know, doing something with it, cleaning it up, making it useful, putting in some walking paths and letting people enjoy it. You know, that would be very nice. I'm glad for some of the changes that have been made, and thank you for that. We do have several other parks nearby. We've got Echo Lake, we've got Warren Aco, Broadway River Park, Esposito, Oak Ridge. And I get that we have funds to do something with this property and, you know, and I'm grateful for it. But when I look at some of these other properties, very recently, I, I actually was walking with a child in Esposito Park, and some of the athletic equipment is broken or missing pieces now. I was in Echo Lake Park many times throughout my life, but in the past few months, I noticed it could use some dredging and cleaning up. And obviously, there are boats and boat access there. So it's just if we've got funds to do something with, perhaps we can focus on maintaining some of what we're, what we have today. And keep in mind that anything we build here, we're going to also need to maintain because just putting it there and letting it deteriorate isn't always the best thing, right? My opposition to the overall plan is really the water access and boat ramp at the end of Wendell Place. Approximately ten years ago, I purchased the property at twenty-seven Wendell because it was a quiet street, quiet neighborhood, no through traffic to anywhere. It's a safe area for people to walk, ride bikes, for children to play. And selfishly, for a non-verbal special needs child who wanders into the street, bolts into the street sometimes out of excitement without any regard for traffic or his own safety. So that is something we need to keep in mind. There are children along this street, these streets, that are always on scooters, bicycles, skateboards. Wendell Place is a very narrow street, and there are cars lined both ends, both sides of the street all the time. So the property at twenty-seven Wendell is actually on the corner of Wendell and Whitley. Whitley is an unimproved street where it's filled with potholes, there's no curbing. It's even narrower than Wendell, and it will now become a cut through to any boat ramp or water access over there. So essentially, a boat ramp and water access at the end of Wendell is going to increase traffic in the area. That's without a doubt. It's going to worsen already deteriorating and poor road conditions in that area. It's going to decrease safety. It's going to decrease neighborhood appeal, decrease home values. That's my point to make, and thank you.
My name is Pat Delaney, and I'm a thirty year resident on Wendell Place at twenty-nine Wendell Place. My main objection to the boat ramp is, why do we need it in the first place? Talking about bringing kayaks, canoes, everything else, but at the same time, you're talking about having paddle boats and various other things elsewhere. I hear there's something to do with, well, they need access to that side of the lake so they can use it, but why? There's a bridge that crosses the whole area. Why can't we just have the boat ramp on one side and allow people to travel underneath? These aren't powered boats. They're not going to knock down the bridge that's there that's everybody's concerned about when it comes to the Garden State Parkway. I don't understand the reason for it. The other concern that I have is, like I said, I've been there thirty years. I've raised my kids, and they played out in the street just like everybody does right now. That is an active area. I don't know how many of you, before you made this decision, decided to come out and take a look and see what that neighborhood is like on the weekends. And yeah, why the weekends? Because that's when the boats are going to come. That's when the people with the kayaks on top of their vehicles, in the back of their pickup trucks, or yes, even trailers, okay? Because you get a big enough group, they'll come down with trailers. I was in Scouts, we used to do it all the time. That's the concern. It's the safety of our kids. I now have grandchild that I'm waiting on, you know, that I get to see all the time. The other thing is, is I've been there long enough to see the neighborhood change. A lot of the old people have moved out. New life is coming into that neighborhood, and yes, they are bringing young children with them. Every single day, I cringe when I see a child bolt out of the door and try to run across the street. It happens all the time. If that's not enough, the noise, it is a real factor. I invite any one of you to come down, especially when the firing range at the police department is going off. You can hear the noise travel all the way up Wendell. If you take out the natural sound barrier that's provided by the trees, that noise is going to get worse. And yes, you can still hear the parkway noise as well. So it's just going to amplify the situation we're already dealing with. I implore you to visit the area, check it out, and think about how you would like that if it was your backyard that's being affected. I am nowhere near the water. I am like halfway up the street to the point where, when the notice went out, I wasn't to be affected by it. So I didn't have to be informed as a resident of Wendell Place that it was within that area. Anybody that lives on that road is affected. So I really do invite you, come out, check out the neighborhood, especially on the weekend, see the kids that are playing, look at the condition of the roads that are there. In thirty years, they've never been resurfaced. Despite numerous, numerous requests, it's never happened. The drains are so bad that they're actually sinking into the pavement because they've not been maintained. So again, I implore you, come out and visit before you make the final decision. I really appreciate everything that you've done so far, but the boat ramp is a mistake. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. I stand before you today to express my concerns about the proposed boat ramp on Wendell Place.
Please state your name.
My name is Agata Kuzmiki. A place, a quiet residential street cherished for its peace and tranquility. This neighborhood is a home to families, children, and individuals who value the safety and calm that comes with living on a low traffic street. Over twenty children regularly utilize the dead end of Wendell Place to play outdoors throughout all seasons, enjoying the freedom and safety that a quiet street provides. Introducing a boat ramp here would drastically change the dynamic of this small street, increasing both traffic and noise. While we recognize the need for additional boating access, we firmly believe that there are far more suitable locations that are better equipped to handle the traffic associated with a boat ramp. Placing the ramp in an area with existing infrastructure designed to accommodate increased vehicular and boating traffic would benefit both boaters and residents. We ask the decision makers to consider other options, ensuring that Wendell Place remains a peaceful, safe heaven for families and children, and that boating enthusiasts can access a facility in a location that is safer and more practical for all parties involved. Let's protect our children's childhoods and keep our community strong. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Elaine Blake, and I'm from Cornerstone in Berkeley Heights. Now, I want to echo exactly what both sides are trying to say. What, for us Cornerstone employees, it might be too late for us. But for the people who are still in it, I just wanted to say to you lawmakers, when you decide to make laws or change something, like the gentleman just said, you need to go out into the area and see what it is. For us in Cornerstone, we do not know anyone here because we have not seen them at Cornerstone. First, it was Runnells Specialized Hospital. We have not seen you guys. So therefore, to make decisions for us, I don't know how you did it, but you were not there to see exactly what happened. So like for us, like I said, it may be late. But for others, when decisions are made, somebody should be present so that the decision is not just with you guys, but it's with the people who are involved. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Bruno, and I currently live in Scotch Plains. And I lived, my parents built their house in nineteen fifty on Wendell Place, and they lived there until twenty nineteen. And I'm here because I'm really passionate about this situation that's going on. I could cry, I'm sorry. Okay. So I have pictures. Nobody can see what's going on. This is Wendell Place. This is Wendell today, cars, as we're all, I'm reiterating everything everybody said. Small street, lot of, you know, cars. This is Wendell Place and Leferts Lane. And this, this is the street coming down to, coming down to Leferts Lane and Wendell where it converges. We have these signs with children. This is, let's see, so this is the area where all the kids play basketball and other, and other parts of the street. I grew up here, we had lemonade stands, we played outside all the time. And I want to see this, this neighborhood stay the way it is because you're, you move there for that reason, because it is a beautiful area and it's safe because of the location of, you know, the place. And this is the, let's see, I'm here, sorry. This is the opening where this is the wooded area, which we call a little forest area. And this is the, this is the amount of trees that, like we're all saying, once these, you know, once the trees are gone and we make it to a parking lot, which it's devastating to me to even think of that, the noise is going to be ridiculous because now the parkway is ten lanes over there. And this is the inside of the woods, because I don't know if you've, anybody, have you ever even been there? Again, this is the, these, this is the walkway. I used to walk this way through to go to high school every day, and my brothers and sisters did, and lots of other people here did as well. So this is a beautiful, beautiful wooded place, which I'd hate to see become a parking lot and other things that it's going to be. This is the area where you would walk down towards, where I believe the boat dock ramp, whatever's going to be there. And this is where, you know, I think it would be, and here's the bridge. So it's very, you know, you guys can see. So a couple of things I had to say was, and I should have worn green tonight. So my, so I'm going, again, so everybody knows, we know it's a low traffic street now. We hate to see it change. And I hate to see any of these kids get, get hurt that are now playing on it. It just breaks my heart. Let's see. And it is a quality of life issue. Everybody's saying that about the safety. And I have this question, would you want to live there if this changed? Would you want to be on that street? I don't think so. Because it's going to turn into a thoroughfare, it's going to be constantly traveled all the time, and it's where the, where the kids are. And it's just my, it's, I just, I think some of the things sound like really cute and nice, but to that area, I don't, I don't like it. And some argue that the property, property values are not going to go down, but I, I think that they will because it's, I can foresee in the future that it's not going to be a place that people are going to, you know, look to live on if it's busy and it's changed and it's not what it, what it is now. So I talked about the woods, and I am concerned about the, the trees being cleared out and all the, all the animal life in there and, and the noise. So, thank you very much.
My name is Susannah Savelli from Clark, New Jersey, on Wendell Place. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for helping us cut down the scope of the original Clark Reservoir Project so far. We really thank you for that. That was a big step. However, I think we need to make one more step. That's really three big, big issues, which might have been, might be repeating some of the things that people said, but I think they need to be said again. The first one is accessway to this boat ramp. Now, just Now, just for your clarifications, in case you forgot, Union County is building two boat ramps here, 500 yards apart. There's a main boat ramp with the concession stands, which, there's a lot of issues with those things too, but it's, there's a main boat ramp with boat rentals, boat concession stands, fishing piers, parking lots, bathrooms, 500 yards away from Wendell Place. Why do we need a secondary one? Okay? And in the, unlike the main boat ramp that you're building, you are building a new direct-access road from the main county road, Madison Hill Road, directly into your boat ramp, building blah, blah, blah. As far as an accessway is concerned, that's more acceptable than trying to use a neighborhood of almost a mile. There's two roads that leads to this boat ramp on Wendell Place, Leferts Lane and Wendell Place. There's a two main road that go in there. When I measured it, it's almost a mile of residential neighborhood that are using as a thoroughfare now, that you are rezoning this area to become a trailer-passing neighborhood. I don't know why we allow ourselves to do that. You, I mean, let me exaggerate the point, just to make a point. You would never want to build a warehouse for Amazon at the end of a residential street to allow trucks to go through like this. Why are we building a boat ramp to let boat trailers go through a little tiny neighborhood? There's 120 families involved here, and this is the only access road into this boat ramp that you're building 500 yards away from the main one. Why? Why are we wasting our own taxpayers' money to ruin neighborhood for 120 people and rezon it at your own will? So that, there's safety involved with the children. It's already very narrow streets, as was mentioned, there's, there's one single narrow passable lane between Coase Park on both sides. It's already very narrow, undersized, there's, both streets have big, a big dangerous curve, bend, that right now, base case, is kind of dangerous to see, to see if you can see oncoming traffic. Now you're going to add boat trailers too? So just like what some other people have said, please come and take a look at this neighborhood and see for yourself whether you would like, if you were living there, to turn this neighborhood into a thoroughfare, which doesn't make sense at all, especially when there's a boat ramp 500 yards away. Second thing is safety, as far as children's concerned, besides traffic. This, this parking lot you're building on Wendell Place, I'm not sure you like carefully look at the drawings or visited the area, it's hidden behind woods. Okay, we're cutting down four trees to build this one behind other existing trees. It's a parking lot hidden at the end of a quasi cul-de-sac, dead-end street, hidden from view. It's, you're building and encouraging undesirable activities for teenagers and young adults between the blasting musics, the drinking, the drugs, drug transactions. It is an ideal place for undesirable activities or even criminal activities. Why are you building a facilities to encourage those activities right next to families living there, right next to it? My house is going to be right next to it. Why are you doing this when there's a boat ramp 500 yards away? So safety, and I'm sure there's not going to be police standing there the whole time, you know, watching this hidden parking lot. Nobody would build a hidden parking lot like this. The third item on my list is, as was mentioned before, the removal of the trees, which really helps, you know, besides climate change, which we all know, besides helping with the flooding issues and drainage issues that was already mentioned, it serves as a sound buffer for the parkway and for firing range.
Thank you.
And, and?
Thank you. The time limit is up, we have to adhere to that. Thank you.
Please, your time is up.
My name is Janet Gates, I live in Clark. I totally agree with these people on Wendell Place. I don't live on Wendell Place, but I know the area, and they are absolutely right, this is devastating to their area. I've lived on Janicey Drive for 43 years, and I've looked at your new plan. Every single thing is affecting everybody on Janicey Drive, and it's going to be devastating to our property values, to our safety, and to our lifestyles. 50-foot buffer hasn't changed, the parking lots haven't changed, the boat thing hasn't changed. Since all these, quote, "amusements" have been deleted, can't that be moved to the empty area now so it isn't so bad for our neighborhood? It's just not right to do this. We have a gorgeous area, the wildlife, the trees, you know, this is something I've lived with for 43 years, and to have a boat trailer parking lot by backyard, it's not right.
I don't live like directly on the reservoir, my neighborhood isn't perhaps directly affected. But I do want to touch on some point that the Wendell neighbors are making. And I will say that my street is probably at a lower elevation than they are. And I hear their concerns particularly peaks my extra concern about flooding. And I would just like to express a continued concern, particularly in Wendell, where I don't understand why and what the tree removal will do to the water level, okay? Even if you put permeable surface down, we're removing trees, they have roots, the water flows down. And what effect that will have, because there's different types of flooding, right? Surface flooding, there's also flooding that happens from groundwater seeping into basements, and that depends on the level. And this project will change that, there's no doubt in my mind. I also would appreciate if, at the end, when you answer questions, you could please comment on what the aeration system is going to be and this biosis aeration system that I've heard you're looking at using in the reservoir. And if you could tell us, please, where this is being piloted in the county. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Tony from Wendell Place in Clark. I've got a couple ideas, I don't know if they have or haven't been mentioned. I don't agree with boat trailers at all, no boat trailers. You don't have to have extended parking lots that, for boat trailers. You don't have to have paved parking lots with lines. All you have to do is have woodchips that are the same as the trails and let everybody park next to each other and find the next available spot. So no boat trailers at all and no parking lots with, that are paved with lines. That means there's no noise, such as Island Beach State Park is an example. Hundreds of people go in and out of there. They all come in, they offload their, their kayaks, canoes, whatever, they go out on the water, and they park in another area on, on woodchips. Dawn to dusk, there's no lighting needed. You come in in the morning, you leave at night. We don't have the fear of vandalization at night or any, or any kind of dangers to our having people that don't live in the area, in the area or accessing any of the, any of the residents by water. Hack, let's see, Hackaborn State Park is one of those parks in Chester that has the dawn-to-dusk curfew, and you know, that works very well for them. They also have the trails that are, have all woodchips. Kayaks, canoes, anything that you can carry in or roll in, they have wheels on these things. You roll them in, you take them off, however, your vehicle, however, a car top or whatever, you carry them in or you wheel them in. I'm a big canoeist and kayaker, I get around a lot to a lot of parks. Island Beach State Park is, down the shore is another one of those parks that you carry in. And all human power, paddles and pedals, no electric motors that, just to try to prevent a collision, races on the, on the water, any of that kind of stuff. It's just scenic, it's quiet, there's, there's, there's nothing to it. No inflatables to create less of a danger on the water and a 14-foot maximum boat size. So we don't get guys that are ringing their bell out there with something bigger than they should. Boat access should be just open area with woodchips. That's all you need to launch any of these boats. You don't need any kind of paved, paved ramp or, or blacktop or any of that. Just carry it in and, and put it right down, in Island Beach State Park, they do it off the sand. Wendell Place, that's a real bad idea. You, you have two strong curves in both of your access roads. To try to, whether you have a trailer or not, if you're not from the, from the area and you're, you're, you're not knowledgeable of the kind of, you know, environment it is, we have cars on both sides of the road and we have curve. You can only fit one car through that curve on both sides, and there's too many strollers. It's all families, there's too many strollers and kids all over the place that you have to have extreme, you have to have crawl speed and then, and then be aware of the, of the unpredictable. So, you know, Wendell Place is a real, real bad idea. Plus, this reservoir is not big enough for two boat ramps. One centralized boat ramp is, is plenty for anybody with a paddle or, or an oar to get from one end to the other. So far as, there is an ample amount of space underneath the parkway bridge to, to trans, traverse underneath the parkway bridge from one side to the other, as everybody's been doing for years and will continue to do so. It is, it is just as safe as anywhere else on the water. Finally, any, any kind of, any kind of cost savings that are, that are had by not putting anything at the end of Wendell Place? There was always the thought and idea to put something behind the high school, an education observation center. Make it a state-of-the-art facility that the public can access along with all our students of our, of our school. They have the access with their, with the school parking lot, and it's, and it's a great spot. We don't need two boat ramps. Cancel that Wendell Place thing, it's a real bad idea. That's all I have to say.
And before the people leave with the, from the Cornerstone, maybe they'd like to know some of the COVID money is being spent on this park, on this Wendell Place boat ramp that none of the neighbors want. So that's where some of the COVID money is going to. Thank you to the U.S. government, giving the county $35 million or so for COVID relief that's being used for a park that nobody really wants. So there you go. But anyway, I digress. I, I really appreciate taking out all the amusement facilities that were proposed, and I don't need to repeat them all, that was totally a bad idea. And there are a couple of things, though, that I still think need to be looked at. I'm not going to beat the dead horse, the Wendell Park boat ramp, obviously. The, the retention basin, with all of this stuff going away, I'm really not sure what this retention basin is needed for. Why don't we get rid of everything that we're putting there so we don't need a retention basin? In 2024, that's the best we could do is take down more trees to dig a big hole to store rainwater in. And next to a reservoir, I don't know how many gallons of water in that reservoir, but after the dredging, won't there be more room for water in the reservoir? Instead of taking out that, the park area there, take out that little finger that supposedly nobody could touch, that grew within 10 years? You're going to take down trees that have been there maybe 100 years and leave a little finger in the reservoir because DEP says you can't touch that little finger because it has roots? I mean, that's a totally bizarre excuse. I mean, I would really take a look at that if I was on the project with you. And the last thing is, I don't really know what's going on, if there's anything going on at the north side of, of the East Lake, but if you go there at night, it's a beautiful view of the reservoir and a perfect place for walkways along the water. The people live pretty high up Ivy Street is one of the streets there, Lakeside Boulevard, they're pretty high up on the ground. Putting something on the water should not disturb their privacy, and it's a beautiful view. I encourage everybody to take a walk there, be careful because you might fall over, and there's a lot of trees and stumps and, and roots. But that would be a perfect place for walking water walkways, and it would be, I think, a big attraction, you know, to the, to the enjoyment of the reservoir. And, and I, I know there's new plans out, and I just hope in the new plans, there's no kind of commercial business going on over with boat rentals and people that have to work there to take money. I mean, keep it passive, like the man said, take your kayak over there on your back and walk down a trail and throw it in. That's what real kayakers want to do. They don't want all of this hoopla. They, they go to places in the woods where nobody even is probably allowed to launch a kayak and throw it in the water. I mean, that's, that's the kind of people that want to enjoy that area, you know, with boating and not make it a big commercial thing of boating. You know, we have that over in Warren Echo Park, I guess, and what else do we need? So, but thank you for the first steps, and I hope that comment about our final plan is not really a comment on the final plan. I think that would be a really cruel thing to do to the people of Clark, to say, that's our final plan. Nobody lives in Clark that's sitting up on the, up ahead of me. And I think to just throw it out there, that's your, our final plan, a done deal, go home, is really cruel. Thank you for listening.
My name is Jonathan Zama, I'm a resident of Wendell Place. I'm here to echo the concerns of my neighbors. And as a father of two small children, two-year-old and three-year-old, I first moved in Wendell Place about 12 years ago, maybe two kids came on Halloween. And to see how this neighborhood has changed since I built my family, last year, within a half hour, I would say 50 pounds of candy were given out of my house. It's just tremendous, amazing, if you ever came to visit and see how this neighborhood is with the kids. And I fear for my daughters because, like everybody says, the street is narrow, people come with these boat ramps. They go to the parking lot, if it's full, they're going to race out of the neighborhood, limited access, narrow streets, to go to the next boat ramp, and I'm terrified about it. We actually have a block party planned Saturday, September 21st. I would like to invite every one of you, if you would like to see how this neighborhood is, you know, see the children, see how lively and beautiful and picturesque this neighborhood is and just how impactful and horrible of a plan it would be to wreck the end of the dead-end street, which is not designed for this, this use. Thank you.
Delia Collins, Clark, New Jersey. I'm looking over the new plan, and I am a little bit confused, and maybe I have to take more time to look at it. But I see that the plan that's been posted has ended at Wendell Place, and also, there's no information here about the continuation of the walkways. And that was one of my concerns, and I'm still going to bring it up because I don't know if it's still going to exist. On Featherbed Lane, from Raritan Road to the Featherbed Lane Bridge, there is allegedly supposed to become a traffic pedestrian light at the end of the bridge going across to the other side of the beginning of Featherbed Lane. Then further down on Featherbed Lane, when you go across the, the bridge to the other side of Featherbed Lane, there's supposed to be another pedestrian hawk light. On Raritan Road itself, from the Clark Fire Department to Madison Hill Road, there will be three different traffic signals. One is an emergency light for the fire department, one be, would be your pedestrian-controlled light, and then the traffic light at Madison Hill Road. Yesterday, I'm sorry, Monday, Tuesday, when I was on that road, I was probably a good two, three blocks stuck on Raritan Road, and you should And you should come out and take a look at Featherbed Lane when you come down past the Deutscher Club and it curves to the left. And that, that's where you want to have another, the pedestrian hawk light. That curve is very dangerous. People come from Victoria Drive to the right. People come from Featherbed Lane to the left and it's hard to see. If this is something that you're going to put up, I, I hope that nobody gets injured. Same with the light at Raritan Road and Featherbed Lane. If people are going to be coming down on the shore of the reservoir, they're going to have to cross there. There is no walkway on Featherbed Lane that I can see. I'm sorry, there is no space near the reservoir that people can walk along the reservoir. And there, on the plans that you have, I see no walkway against the reservoir. The only walkway there is on Featherbed Lane, which is a township road. And if people want to walk on the sidewalk, they would have to cross Featherbed Lane to get onto the sidewalk and then again cross at the bridge. So you have a constant back and forth to both sides of Featherbed Lane. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Mulligan. I'm at Wendell Place in Clark. I want to thank you for listening to the residents of Clark. Now I'm asking you to please listen to the residents of Wendell Place regarding the dock at the end of Wendell. For all the reasons everybody stated, I'm not going to repeat them, our neighborhood cannot sustain the additional traffic and for the safety of our children. And again, the, the noise from the Parkway, 10 lanes in the Parkway and the firing range. Do you have a budget for maintaining all these parks and will it raise our taxes? That's one of my questions that have not been answered. On another note, getting away from the reservoir property, I'm a registered beekeeper with the state of New Jersey. And according to NJAC 730-911, which states that pesticides applicators must notify registered beekeepers at least 24 hours prior to a pesticide application that is within three miles of the treatment area. Now Middlesex County calls me when they do any kind of spraying in Main Avenue, New Dover Road. Union County has yet to call me. On 7/25, I, we noticed that they sprayed our street. I was not notified. And additionally, Wendell Place was not on the list, Lefrids Lane was, Turhune and Whitley Terrace were. So the next day I called mosquito control. The gentleman was apologetic. He took my name, address and phone number and promised I would be notified in the future. I have not been notified. They have sprayed seven times since my phone call to them and also today they're spraying in Clark this evening. And I was not notified. This is against DEP regulations and it's unacceptable. Thank you.
Well, I'm most glad to see you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Commissioner Board and various golden nuggets. This is Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. Reso 644 is giving $100,000 change order to David's Fire System contract of $650,000 a 15% increase. Back in January 2023, you gave this contract out as a two-year contract. Why are you increasing this $100,000 before the contract is up? Please provide to the public a reason and location of the work. Reso 646 is increasing Panetta Automation's $300,000 contract, another 15% or $50,000. Please provide for the public a reason and the location of this work. In my opinion, from, from my experience, construction experience, all these change orders garner in 20% unwarranted profits for the contractors. That totals $30,000. Reso 662 involves the Clark Reservoir. In May 2022, Reso 423 added $4 million in grants to the budget for the reservoir. In December 2022, Reso 1057 added $4 million in grants for the reservoir. In October 2023, Reso 888 added $10 million in grants for the reservoir. Today we are adding $4 million in grants for the reservoir. Please confirm to the public the potential good news that we have $22 million in grants so far for the reservoir. Reso 674 is certifying the 2023 audit. I've read the published audit and was horrified at the way you guys handle the county fiscal policy. I've been stating this for eight years. This audit noted that you have a fund balance of $200 million. That's cash in the bank after reserves and expenditures with some probable encumbrances outstanding. We find these millions of free dollars crop up every budget year and then you bury it back in the budget by subterfuge. I've stated there's at least $150 million in free cash that you hide from the taxpayers. This game is ridiculous. Your, your vaunted AAA rating was already achieved in 2016 with $50 million in surplus. You even canceled the public budget hearings this year. This year you laughably cried poverty and raised county taxes nearly 2%. In my opinion, County Manager Oatman and Finance Director Bibby Taylor are culpable in this non-transparent financial failure, the biggest that I've seen in my 20 years coming here. Are all of you so simply afraid to stand up for the public's interests? My suggestion is get rid of both of them and give us taxpayers back our $150 million. Just who's the puppet masters here? Reso 676 is giving Finance Director Bibby Taylor's BFF Dig Architects over $300,000 in design services for Maskers Barn. I, I heard Vicky talking about it, but in my opinion, from hearing the issues, $300,000 is way over bloated for this type of bid. Was this ever bid out? Reso 697 is giving Giacobi Alfieri Law Firm $50,000 for a lawsuit of, of a lot of abbreviations versus the county of Union. In searching New Jersey court database, nothing comes up with these initials. Can you give the, the public a docket number for research and a simple overview of what this case is about since tax money is being spent and why the abbreviations? General comment. You know, I, I do commend the county and the Clark Reservoir Committee for coming to an agreement to discard the most egregious elements of the proposed reservoir plan and to further conserve the wooded areas that were targeted to be removed. However, I ruminate on this sea change since I, I find the DEP lacking tracking database went silent the past couple of months. The county is imposing a hiring freeze while also there are found to be employee firings that Reynolds was talking about. Other items of interest was why were two commissioner, commissioner meetings suddenly canceled and or rescheduled? Still the grill in the room is the state comptroller threat of stopping any state funding into the county, which the public has no idea how this situation is going. Is this all related somehow? But bottom line, this revamping of, of the Clark Reservoir proposal is, is considered a good thing for the public and the environment. Thank you for your efforts and thank you to the Clark Reservoir also. Lastly, if I have time, what was the negotiation in executive session about with the IA only because you fired everybody there and you took full control directly? So I mean, you know, I don't understand what you were negotiating. If you could elaborate on that. Thank you.
Mr. Patterson, if you read the agenda, it's the Utilities Authority, that'd be the UA. It's on the agenda, sorry.
Seeing no one else, I will formally close this portion of the meeting. I'd like to call Rich Mathias to the microphone to address Resolutions 644 and 646.
Thank you, Chair. Both of those change orders are for additional work that's necessary from both of those contractors for the Union County Courthouse complex here in Elizabethan.
Thank you. And County Council Bergen, can you comment on the question regarding Resolution 697?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I don't have the docket number with me, but the reason there are initials is because that is how the pleading itself, the complaint is captioned. Based on a state law, I'm not sure exactly went past in the last year or two, people who allege they were abused as minors were given an opportunity to file a lawsuit many years later. That, that is what this is. Some of these claims go back close to 60 years. And so the plaintiffs are listed by their initials and the county is hiring counsel who's familiar with this area of law to defend this case. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you to our residents from Clark who brought up all of your valid concerns and we will take those into under consideration. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to adopt Resolutions 2024-633 through 2024-715. So moved.
Second.
A motion was made by Vice Chairwoman Leon and was seconded by Commissioner Bodak. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Bodak.
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisfort.
Aye.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmary Mueded.
I'm going to abstain from 2022-658, I'm sorry, 2024-658 and aye to the rest.
Chair, let the record reflect, you have nine votes and the affirmative on all resolutions with the exception of Resolution 2024-658. Eight votes in the affirmative with one abstention.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we are going to go into our Commissioner Reports and Comments. Before we do so, I just wanted to highlight and express the board's gratitude to Lisa Bullock, who has worked for the board for the past six year, I believe, six years. She's been with the county for a long time. She's worked directly under the board for the last six years and she is going to be moving into a different role. And although we will miss you dearly, we truly value and appreciate all that you have done for all of us over the last several years. You are a wonderful, wonderful person on the inside and out. We, we really value your friendship and your work ethic and we are so excited for you to be moving into this different phase and we know that you will not be far. So we are looking forward to continued relationships with you, but want to wish you the very, very best. Okay, tonight I will start with Commissioner Kowalski.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks to all who came to participate tonight. I have information about our 4H clubs, which are starting up again for the season. We invite Union County students in grades one to 12 to join a 4H club this fall and explore popular fields ranging from cooking, sewing, art, archery, robotics and more. And young people in their first year after graduating from high school are also invited. The majority of the clubs meet at our Colleen Fraser Building at 300 North Avenue East and Westfield on Friday, Saturday or Sunday. And the clubs are organized by age and topic. The members meet with an adult club leader on a monthly basis during the school year to plan activities and programs. And you can learn more about the different clubs for this year by having a look at our website, ucnj.org/rce, which stands for Rutgers Cooperative Extension. And the, the Rutgers Co-op, excuse me, is supported by the Commissioner Board and it has offices in Berkeley Heights and the clubs run from October to June. And so if you want to sign up for a club or you know someone who does, you can email Mr. James Niknadowitz at Union County 4H Youth Development Agent. I'll spell out his name, J.N.I.C.H.N.A.D.O.W.I.C.Z@ucnj.org or call 908-654-9854. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker.
Thank you. The Union County Clerk, Joanne Rajapi, is hosting a notary public training seminar on Friday, September the 3rd, September the 20th at 8:45 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at the John H. Stamblin Police Academy at 1776 Raritan Road, Scotch Plains. Union County First Deputy Counsel, County Counsel, Mashad, no, I'm not going to pronounce this correctly, Mufta Esquire.
Mufta.
Mufta, yes, right, Mufta will be the featured speaker. Space is limited to the first 50 registrants with a $10 registration fee required by September the 9th. The fee includes a light breakfast. The seminar will cover the notary public application process, legal requirements, notarization steps, completing a notary journal and examining ID requirements. To register, download the form from the county clerk's website at ucnj.org/county-clerk. And for more information, contact Anna Lima at 908-527-4787. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In recognition of National Suicide Prevention Month, we have collaborated with Caring Contact to offer residents a free informative webinar this September titled HEAR, H.E.A.R., to help active listening for emotional support. This webinar is free and will discuss the significance of active and effective listening, the impact of empathy and numerous other strategies to provide meaningful support to a loved one experiencing, experiencing emotional distress. Workshop will be presented by Caring Contact's Crisis Line Director, Michelle Habayeb, on Monday, September 30th from 6 to 7 p.m. via Zoom and Facebook Live. The webinar is presented by our own Union County Department of Human Services in partnership with Caring Contact. And for those of you who do not know, Caring Contact is an award-winning, volunteer-staffed crisis hotline that provides a safe space and empathetic ear to all who call. The Zoom link for the webinar can be accessed by registering online at ucnj.org/spmzoom. For more information on all of our Union County services, human services programs in addition to this one, please visit us online at ucnj.org/dhs or call our action line, the DHS action line at 908-677-5405. And I would like to also just say, you know, I, I thank everyone who came out to discuss the changes in, at the Clark Reservoir Project regarding that. And it is a park that is to be used by all folks in the county. And I, I agree with the changes that were made. I thought they were some good changes. So it is a park for all residents, all 565,000 or so residents. And I think those changes will make it an enjoyable place for everyone. And I also do want to just, again, congratulate Lisa Bullock on her, on her new role. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Granados.
Thank you, Chair. I'm excited to announce the Union County Means Business Expo on Thursday, September 12th from 5 to 7:30 p.m. at Warren Ankle Park, Sports Center in Roselle. The expo is free to attend. The expo is free to attend. To register for this event, please visit ucnj.org/UCMB. Union County Means Business is an economic development initiative of the Union County Board of County Commissioners, partly supported by county partners across the County of Union. For more information about the Union County Means Business Expo, visit ucnj.org/UCMB or contact Jeff Brooks, Coordinator for Business Development, at 908-659-7412 or jeffreys.brooks@ucnj.org. And I think echoing what's been said before, Lisa, you've been a tremendous asset to each one of us, not only as someone working amongst our staff, but as a friend to all of us. So, we thank you for your leadership, your friendship, and look towards your great success you're going to have in your new role. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Bodak.
Regarding the Clark Reservoir Project, I just want to say, I believe, our Union County team has worked hard to balance progress with preservation, carefully considering every detail. The thoughtful revisions we've made, whether it's reducing the number of trees removed, enhancing water quality, or introducing low-impact recreational options, ensure that this area will serve the needs of both the residents and visitors alike. I want to thank County Manager Oatman for leading these efforts. In honor of National Recovery Month, the Union County Board of County Commissioners, in partnership with the Office on Behavioral Health and Substance Abuse and Prevention Links, will host a webinar titled Voices of Recovery: Celebrating Strength and Resilience on September 24th, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The webinar will be accessible via Zoom and Facebook Live, featuring a panel of speakers sharing their inspiring stories of recovery and resilience. National Recovery Month, observed every September, highlights advances made in recovery and celebrates those who have overcome substance use disorders. Prevention Links, a nonprofit dedicated to substance abuse prevention and mental health support, is collaborating on this event. To register, visit www.ucnj.org/nr-zoom. For more information on National Recovery Month and substance abuse disorders, visit For details on Union County Human Services Program, visit https/ucnj.org/dhs or call DHS Action Headline at 908-677-5405. I want to also congratulate Lisa and thank her for all she's done to make my transition to this position as Commissioner easier. Congratulations, Lisa. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Dellisford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regarding the Clark Reservoir Project, I'm happy to hear that we've established some consensus on the matter. Our revised plan prioritizes water quality improvements, more specifically as it relates to dredging the reservoir to combat sedimentation. It's a critical step in preserving the reservoir's health and ensuring that it remains a valuable resource for this county. These efforts are essential for maintaining the long-term sustainability of the reservoir and it ensures that it continues to serve as a vibrant and a clean and accessible space for both wildlife and everyone in the county. Also, Union County Board of Elections announces important details for the upcoming 10th Congressional Special General Election. Voters can find polling place information and secure Dropbox locations on the Union County Board of Education website at www.ucnj.org/UCBOE. The election is set for Wednesday, September 18th, and the Dropboxes will be available until 8:00 p.m. on Election Day and they'll be under 24-hour surveillance. Early voting is also available from September 8th to September 16th at five locations across Union County, with voting hours being Monday through Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. For details on early voting sites and other election information, please visit UCBOE website or you can call 908-527-4123. And finally, I'd also like to congratulate Lisa. It's been an absolute pleasure working with her for the past eight and a half months. You have been extremely proactive and responsive to all of my needs during the transition and extremely helpful and I truly appreciate you. It's made my transition seamless and I wish you the very best in all of your next role. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mirabella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to take a minute to thank those residents that stayed to the end of the meeting to hear the comments from the commissioners and several have already mentioned the Clark Reservoir Project. Some of you mentioned flooding and the impact in the area. I just want to address that a little bit, how we've tried to incorporate some safeguards into this plan. There was a significant effort really to address the flood concerns by enhancing the reservoir's flood storage capacity. As part of this, we're incorporating a basin that was mentioned before that will collect runoff water, clean it, and safely return it to the lake. This feature not only helps manage stormwater, but also improves water quality, which is crucial for the health of the reservoir and its surrounding ecosystem. The basin will be protected by a fence for the safety of anybody on the walking paths. These are vital environmental improvements that will not only reduce the risk of flooding in our county, but also ensure that the reservoir area is a thriving, sustainable resource for those for years to come. And I said, and many of us said, that we were listening over the last, I don't know, three months this has been kind of happening. And you can see that we were listening and we did make some adaptations to the plan. And we knew that everyone's not going to love every part of it and thus some of the comments tonight, the significant part that people mentioned there. I will tell you that I do plan to go look at the area and visit the area and walk that back trail just to kind of see it for myself. But I do congratulate the county manager for listening to this board, to the residents, to adapt that plan that seems workable for the most part for most of the people. I know not everyone's going to be delighted with every aspect of it. Moving on, I'm happy to announce that Union County's 2024 Fall Festival will be held on Saturday, September 14th, from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at Oak Ridge Park, 136 Oak Ridge Park in Clark. Admission is free. The event features live music, food and refreshments, and for the first time, a micro beer guarding with local breweries in Union County. Attendees must be 21 for that portion of it and show ID, obviously, to purchase alcohol. Musical acts include the fabulous Thunderbirds, The Wait Band, which revives the spirit of The Band with original music. And a band that I think the county manager are particularly delighted about is Dead On Live, which will be playing hits from the Jerry Garcia Band in the mid-'70s. And I'm excited for that. I've seen that band and they're terrific and I hope people will come out and watch that show. It's going to be fun. We'll also collect diapers and baby supplies for local nonprofits. For more information on the diaper drive, please visit ucnj.org/women. This event is presented by the commissioners and the Department of Parks and Recreation. For more details, please visit ucnj.org/parks. Email parksinfo@ucnj.org or call 908-527-4900. I want to welcome all those students returning to grammar school, middle school, high school, college, as the semesters are beginning primarily this week or last week. And I want to, lastly, say I congratulate Lisa on her new position. I want to tell you, Lisa, I did not vote for that to happen, but seeing that it was good for you and good for the county, obviously, I supported it. But you've been a close friend, as many of the commissioners have said. You've done a good job, I think, organizing this group and keeping us all available to the public and I only wish you the best moving forward. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll conclude my comments.
County Council Bergen?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to add my voice to congratulating Lisa on her new position. I'm sure you will do just as well there as the great job you've done for the board for all these years. Congratulations. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. County Manager Oatman?
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Thank you. First and foremost, Lisa, I'm going to miss you dearly. I know you're not going to be far away. I wish you all the best and thank you for all you've done. Your work ethics are phenomenal and you're dearly loved by all of us. I truly love you. I'm going to miss you, but best of luck. On another note, this month starts the celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th through October 15th. As a Hispanic leader in public service, I'm honored to celebrate the hard-working individuals who make up approximately one-third of Union County. And there's a series of events that we are programmed to do aimed at showcasing and exploring the diversity of Hispanic culture. They will include live music, movie night, arts, and much more. The event kicks off with the annual Union County Hispanic Heritage Flag Racing on September 16th at the Union County Courthouse at 4:45 p.m. Following, the full schedule of events includes Friday, September 27th, Family Movie Night, The Book of Life at Kwame Park in Union. Wednesday, October 2nd, at 4:30, Family Movie Night, playing Dora and the Lost City of Gold at Washington Elementary School in Plainfield. On Saturday, October 5th, we're going to have our annual Family Fun Day, which will move inside the sports centers if it rains. There will be free live music, arts and crafts, food trucks at Warren Anco Park outside of the Warren Anco Sports Center. On October 10th, from 11:30 to 2:30 p.m., Hispanic Leadership Event would feature Anna D. Martinez, the Director of the New Jersey Division of Women at Union College of Union County in Cranford. Saturday, October 12th, from 3:00 p.m., we will have Mexico Beyond Mariachi Trekking at UCPAC in Rowway and tickets can be purchased at ucpac.org. And finally, all month long, we will be featuring Hispanic art exhibits right outside of this room in our commissioner's gallery and the residents can view it Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. For more information, please visit our website at ucnj.org/HHM and hope to see you all there. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Okay. I usually like to talk for a long time, but I do have four children starting school tomorrow, including two going to middle school for the first time. So, they, I know I do have to get home sooner than later. But I wanted to just thank our Parks Department and facilities and public safety and everyone that was involved in all of our wonderful summer efforts that we had here at the county. One of my favorites was the Taylor Swift Cover Band. I think we had over 2,000 people there and it was a great show. So, I know a lot of hard work went into making sure all of those events, camps, ran smoothly. So, I want to thank you all for that work. And I, again, want to thank our residents who come out and vocalize, you know, your opinions. I know, Mr. Jacobson, you're a grandpa, so I know we're Facebook friends and I saw you became a grandfather, so congratulations on that. But I want to wish all of our students a really great return to school. Thank our teachers. We had a fabulous teacher that came in earlier. He was recognized by the state and we were super excited to recognize him here. The hard work that goes into our schools, day in and day out. Our students, I wish them all the best. And again, Lisa, we wish you the very best. And I keep thinking about that first Memorial Day parade in Westfield when you and I walked way, way too far. But at this time, we do have to go into an executive session. So, I am going to have County Counsel, please make your statement relative to tonight's executive session.
Thank you, Chair. Pursuant to provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, the public body may enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing certain enumerated subjects. This board now wishes to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing attorney-client privileged communication concerning the matter entitled Brennan versus Union County at All and attorney-client privileged communication concerning the matter entitled Figueroa versus Union County at All. The minutes of the executive session shall be separated from the minutes of the open public session. The minutes of the executive session, redacted as appropriate and necessary, shall be available in approximately 30 days. The clerk to the board shall retain the original minutes until such time as confidential limitations have been removed, at which time they shall be made available. Upon the affirmative vote of majority of the members present, the board may retire to executive session. Upon the board's return, it may or may not take formal action on the matters discussed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
A motion is made by Commissioner Bodak and was seconded by Commissioner Dellisford. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisford?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella? Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmieri Mueded? At the record of show, we have nine votes in the affirmative to enter executive session.
Okay. May I have a motion to return from executive session?
Second.
It was moved by Commissioner Mirabella and seconded by Commissioner Bodak. Clerk of the Board, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisford?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
And Vice Chairwoman Leon, serving as chairwoman.
Aye.
Vice Chair, you have eight votes in the affirmative to return from executive.
County Council Bergen, do you have anything to say as a result of executive session?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Nothing to report at this time.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second. It was moved by Commissioner Mirabella and seconded by Commissioner Dellisford.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 If you don't need a roll call, all in favor is good.
All in favor, good. Aye.
All in favor?
Meeting's adjourned.
Meeting's adjourned.